This time I'll call to order the April 15, 2024 Community Redevelopment Agency Meeting. Like to welcome everyone for attending this afternoon. This time I'll move to item two on the agenda. Are there any amendments to the minutes of the March 18, 2024 CRA meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Moved in second that we approve the minutes as presented. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. This time we'll move to item three on the agenda. Citizens to be heard regarding items not on the agenda. Are there any citizens which wish to be heard?
Good afternoon. I'm Kathleen Beckman, Clearwater resident. Want to take a minute and congratulate the new members for your election and your first CRA meeting. And wanted to let you know I continue to serve as Chair of the Pinellas County Continuum of Care, so I may be up here speaking to you about those types of issues. But I'm here today for three items related to the CRA. And as you know, I mean, as a resident, I will continue to advocate for our residents in Clearwater as well as good governance, and that's kind of why I'm here today. I would, three things I want to suggest to you related to your job, your position as, as the Board of the CRA. Number one is I would suggest that you allocate funds from our general fund for operation of the CRA. To me, to talk about the $5 million that was set aside to jumpstart the North Greenwood CRA and utilize those funds to fund staffing for the CRA is not appropriate. Number one, they're not long-term funds. And number two, those ARPA funds were distributed from the federal government in response to COVID for particular things. It just happened that it coincided with our approval of that North Greenwood CRA. And so every other city has line item budgets, especially for brand-new CRAs, to get that CRA going. You, I think, we need to have a line item budget from general funds for the North Greenwood CRA, especially because we're waiting for an opinion from the Attorney General about the flow-through of funds from the downtown CRA into the North Greenwood CRA. I feel that they're getting shorted by not having a budget item for their first full year in existence. So that's one thing. The other thing is I would, I applaud our city for having dashboards and continuing to bring more dashboards online. I would suggest that we get a CRA dashboard up as soon as possible. We have a grassroots group in North Greenwood that is excited about what's going on and wanting to see progress. We've had some changes in the downtown property recently, as well as conversations about perhaps using CRA funds to buy county buildings. I think we need a dashboard set up as soon as possible for our CRA. And then the third one, I would say, is the Director's Report on the agenda. I would suggest that we have at least some bullets about what's going to be covered in our Director's Report if citizens want to come and speak on those. And some of the things that need to be included in the dashboard are probably included in Jesus's report. That would be grant updates, police report updates, statistics on new businesses, what new businesses are coming, what new businesses have left, the balance of the funds, and an update on how those conversations are going between our city and county groups that are talking about those properties. That's what people care about, and I would urge you to be transparent about that. Thank you.
There any other citizens to be heard on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to item 4.1.
amend the loan to grant agreement with 949 Cleveland Street LLC for the property at 943 Cleveland Street to extend the agreement to July 15, 2024, for building improvements to implement the CRA food and drink grant program and authorize appropriate officials to execute same.
Good morning. Or afternoon now, I'm sorry. For the public and for the new council members, our trustees here, my name is Jesus Nino. I am the Executive Director for the Clearwater Community Redevelopment Agency. This item before you is a Fifth Amendment request for a loan to grant agreement with 949 Cleveland Street LLC for property located at 943 Cleveland Street, basically to extend the agreement to July 15, 2024, for building improvements to implement the CRA food and drink grant program and authorize appropriate officials to execute the same. This program was created by the trustees, or approved by the trustees, back in October of 2018. This particular company requested grant funding for this program back in February 18, 2020, and it was approved by the trustees. This was during the COVID times, so they requested a few amendments to extend this particular grant program on their property. This is the fifth one. And this one in particular is the reason for it is they did lose their tenant that they had originally there, but they have a new tenant in place now. And they also discovered a few issues during their remodeling there of the, the space, which was electrical work that needed to be upgraded according to inspectors. So I did take a tour out there with Bridget, who's out here in the audience, and she'll say a few words if you allow her after I'm done here. And it looks like they're right there at the finish line. They just need a little bit more time to go ahead and finish up this space, so they can go ahead and get their tenant inside and just get to operations and become an asset there to Cleveland Street. And I do encourage all of you to go out there and get you a cup of coffee once they are open. With that, staff is requesting approval of this fifth extension, and I'm here for questions. And also Ms. Bridget Johnson, the general managers, here in addition to answering any questions.
Are there any citizens that wish to be heard on this item? Hearing non-council, any discussion?
I just wanted to make a comment. I've been following the progress, and I acknowledge that, I know it's a long time, and there's been many requests for renewal, but they've really faced sizable challenges and through no fault of their own, so I'm in support of this.
Any other questions? Vice Mayor?
Yeah. So I too have been following this for a few years, and I know they had problems really getting it off the ground. I think it was in the middle of COVID, set them back, and of course, the roof stuff that they had, and now the electrical. So this delay is, are they going to be pretty much finished by the time, by this summer? I mean, is that, are you looking for?
Yes. Their request was actually to June, but we recommended to get them an extension to July, just in case. But as far as them grand opens and so forth, Ms. Bridget is here to answer those particular questions, and I think they'll be done by then.
Okay. I mean, I've been looking forward to this for a long time, and I wish them the best. I hope they, I really hope they do open in June or July. I'm looking forward to seeing that happen. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve 4.1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Notes posed? Unanimous. Move to item five, Director's Report.
Again, for the public, Jesus Nino, Executive Director for the Clearwater CRA. This particular item, continuing, starting next month, we are going to have a presentation basically outlining what we're doing over in North Greenwood, plus the downtown. We did have one started for the particular month, but I didn't think it was ready enough to bring it to you to be acceptable. But next month, we'll be doing that. In addition, just want to let the group know here is that we are going through a new webpage design, working with Joelle's group here. She's Public Communications, to redo the website, the web section for the Clearwater CRA. In that webpage, we will have dashboards for our revenues, our programs, and any other items that we feel appropriate that the trustees and the general public needs to know about. And we're all about transparency, especially me, so we want to put as much information out there without making it look cluttered for the general public and for the trustees. So if you ever want to know where we are in our finances, our budget, you can quickly go there and find it quickly. So can the public. Want to find out about our grants and programs, they can go there quickly and find it as well. Just be transparent, and have a one-stop location for the public and all of you as well. So a lot of these requests that you're asking us to bring to you every month, it'll just be right there at your fingertips every month. That's for the website. Before I move forward, I did want to introduce the CRA team and the DDB team to the new trustees and the rest of you, if you haven't met them. And they are here. I'm going to ask them to stand up. So we have Ms. Ann Lopez. She's a Senior CRA Division Manager. Ms. Vicky Shire, she's actually out this week, but she's here in spirit. Mr. Eric Santiago is a CRA manager. Ms. Tasha Hadley, she's a CRA specialist. Then we have Julia Bautas. She's also CRA specialist. And this is a dream team. Without them, I couldn't do what I'm doing here for the citizens of Clearwater and for all of you, the trustees. As far as me, I just want to let you know that my door is always open. You can give me a call anytime. I do follow protocol, so if, if you have to go through the city manager first, she'll let me know that. But if not, you can contact me anytime, and I'm just here for you day or night. So feel free to give me a call or email me. As far as a few other updates, I did want to let the public know and the trustees know that at the last trustees' meeting, we did approve policy bylaws, basically, for the new North Greenwood Citizens Advisory Committee. So we have created a communications plan and engagement plan to go ahead and try to do that outreach to recruit new CAC members. And we do have a flyer that we did send out on social media and so forth for the Citizens Advisory Committee. So anyone out there in the public who's listening, if you're in the North Greenwood area, you are a resident, a business owner, a property owner, or work for a nonprofit or other organizations out there in the North Greenwood area, feel free to contact us if you're interested in serving on the advisory committee. Second one is that we do have a, on April 24th, this is for the East Gateway Downtown CRA area, we have a community meeting to discuss with the community, the Mercado project, the construction project. It's just, we're just going to be out there from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. We'll be there with Public Works, with Parks and Rec, with the contractor, just to discuss the construction of the Mercado, and just answer any questions. And if there's any potential disruption, who they can contact from the city. So hopefully, some of you can make it. Again, that's April 24th, 6:00 to 7:00 PM, at the Lucas Restaurant and Bar at 1343 Cleveland Street. So if anyone from the public has any questions, feel free to contact staff. As far as that, that's the reports. I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions for the Director or any discussion?
I have several questions.
Hearing none. Thank you for your time.
I had one, yes, sorry. Have you had a chance to reach or have any contact with the new owners of 530 yet?
Say it again.
530. Have you had any, had an opportunity to meet with the new owners of 530, which is the corner of Cleveland and Garden? Or any of your staff?
I can see if staff can come up here and answer that question. I've met with so many people and so many organizations.
I understand.
Ms. Ann Lopez.
Ann Lopez, Senior CRA Manager. I actually, we met with them last week. I know that they are the owners of Graham's Gourmet across the street. We're very much looking forward to them, and they have kind of a long road ahead of them with some of the repairs that they need to do within the space. But we did sit down, talk with them about what some of those would look like, and how the grant programs that we currently have for the CRA could kind of tie in for what they're looking for. So they've started their process on reaching out to get quotes through contractors. So, but yes, we have met with them. They're, they're very excited.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Ann.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the Director? I thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
This time, we'll adjourn the meeting of the Community Redevelopment Agency. This time, I'll call to order the April 15, 2024 Pension Trustees Meeting. We'll move to item 2.1 on the agenda. Are there any amendments to the minutes of the meeting of February 12, 2023?
Move to approve agenda item 2.1.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Item three on the agenda is citizens to be heard regarding items not on the agenda. Seeing those citizens that wish to be heard, we'll move to item 4.1 on the agenda.
Trustees, items, I would like a motion to continue items 4.1 through 4.3, and that is because the Pension Advisory Committee have not had an opportunity to review those items, so any approval right now is not needed from pension trustees. If you can continue it to the next meeting.
Which one again, sorry?
Items 4.1 through 4.3.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to continue items 4.1 through 4.3 to next, next week's meeting.
I'll second it.
Move to continue items 4.1 through 4.3 to the next meeting of the Pension Trustees. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Item 4.4.
A review of the employees' pension plan investment performance for the calendar and planning year that ended December 31, 2023.
Good afternoon, trustees. Jay Ravens, Finance Director. This is an annual review of investment performance for the plan. Before I begin to review the calendar 2023 results, I'd like to provide a little background. The pension plan has an investment committee that meets quarterly to review investment performance with the city's investment consultant, Cap Trust Advisors. The committee consists of city staff, union representatives, and one citizen appointed by the trustees. The city staff members currently include the Finance Director, Assistant Finance Director, and the Finance Accounting Manager. Each of the unions is invited to participate, and currently, CWA and IAFF are actively participating. The Investment Committee makes recommendations to the trustees for money manager terminations and hires, as well as investment policy changes. With that, I'd like to now briefly review the plan's investment performance, including the performance of the total investment portfolio versus the plan's policy benchmark, as well as each of the 22 separate money managers for the various asset classes. The first two columns on this chart provide the calendar year performance values versus the benchmark. The middle two columns provide three-year performance on an annualized basis, and the last two columns provide similar five-year performance results. I'll briefly review. Please interrupt me at any time with questions. Overall, for the plan in total, it was a very good year on both an absolute basis, with a gain of 13.46%. This is versus the plan's assumption of 6.5%. And on a relative basis, as we outperformed our policy benchmark index of 11.42%. All asset categories had a good year, with the exception of the real estate sector, which continues to suffer from the impact of vacant office space and declining appraised values. Calendar 2023 was a very nice rebound from an unusual 2022, when both equities and fixed income were simultaneously down significantly, resulting in a negative 14.9% return versus this year's positive 13.46%. I'll now briefly run through the 22 money managers. Our large-cap growth money manager, the Northern Trust Index Fund, performed close to the index, as expected, with a 42.2% return for the year. This manager was hired in November 2020, so the five-year performance is not available. We have three large-cap value managers, Eagle Capital, Manning and Napier, and the Northern Trust Index Fund. Eagle Capital had an excellent, excuse me, had an excellent year with a 38% return versus an index of 11%. Eagle rebounded from a poor year last year, a negative 25% return, which was primarily due to being underweight in the energy sector for 2022. Despite US stocks in total being down by a negative 18% in 2022, the energy sector was up 65%. Any money manager significantly underweight to the index in this single sector in 2022 underperformed significantly versus the index. This is a good example of the volatility in investment manager returns from year to year, which is why we focus on long-term performance and whether managers are staying true to the investment discipline that we hired them for. Manning and Napier provided a 10% return for the year, but underperformed their index for the calendar year for the last three years and for the last five years. The Investment Committee recently decreased the plan's investment in Manning and Napier by 15 million, or 35%, and continues to monitor performance for further action as appropriate. The Northern Trust Index Large-Cap Value Fund performed at the index for all three time periods, as expected, with an 11.6% return for the year. We have one mid-cap growth manager, Artisan Partners. Artisan slightly underperformed their index for the current year, but provided a 25% return. Their three-year performance significantly underperformed the index due to being underweight to the energy sector in 2022, similar to Eagle Capital discussed previously. Their five-year performance was slightly better than the index. Artisan continues to stay true to the investment process that we hired them for, and we expect them to continue to outperform on a long-term basis. Our mid-cap value manager, Boston Partners, provided a 16.7% return for the year and outperformed their index for both the one-year and the three-year. Five-year performance is not available due to hiring them in April 2020. Our small-cap growth manager, River Bridge Partners, provided a 20% return for the year and outperformed on both a one-year and five-year basis. Their underperformance on the three-year measure was due to poor performance in 2022, due to, once again, being significantly underweight in the energy sector. We have two small-cap value managers, Atlanta Capital and Victory Sycamore. Atlanta Capital provided a 20.7% return for the year and has had excellent performance for the one-year, three-year, and five-year periods. Victory Sycamore had a down year, performing with an 11.55% return versus their index of 14.65%, but continues to outperform for both the three-year and five-year periods. We have two international equity managers that invest in developed countries, WCM and TSMW. Both had excellent absolute returns for the year, 16% and 17% respectively. Both underperformed for the three-year period due to poor performance in 2022, but both continue to outperform for the five-year period. We expect their long-term outperformance to continue. We have one emerging markets international equity manager, DFA. DFA provided a 15% return for the year and has outperformed on all three measures. We have two fixed-income managers, Dodging Cox and Western Asset Management. Dodging Cox provided a 7% return for the year and has outperformed the index on all three measures. Western Asset Management provided a 6% return, outperforming the index. They have slightly underperformed for the three-year period and slightly outperformed for the five-year. We have no concerns with either of these managers at this time. Our real estate core manager, Multi-Employer Property Trust, or MEPT, had a negative 16% return for the year and has underperformed their index for all three time periods. The Investment Committee continues to closely monitor this manager and has requested redemption of 50% of our investment, or 30 million. This request was made in May of 2023, and we remain on a redemption wait queue. We have two Core Plus real estate managers, Intercontinental and Affinius Capital, previously USAA. Intercontinental had a negative 16% return for the year and has similarly underperformed their index for all three time periods. The committee is closely monitoring their performance also for future action as appropriate. Affinius had a negative 7.85% return for the year, but has significantly outperformed the index for the one-year, three-year, and five-year We have one real estate REIT manager, Security Capital. Security Capital provided a 15.7% positive return for the year. They slightly underperformed on the one-year and three-year basis, but continue to outperform for the five-year. No, no concerns with this manager's performance. No concerns with this manager's performance at this time. The plan participates in three timber limited partnerships, one with Hancock and two with Mopus. Hancock had a negative point four-three percent return for the year, while the two Mopus partnerships provided two point four-one percent and three point five-five percent returns. Hancock has underperformed the index for all three time periods, while Mopus has provided some outperformance. These limited partnerships terminate in four to seven years. Finally, we have one infrastructure money manager, IFM Global Infrastructure. IFM provided an eight point four percent return for the year, but had a tough year relative to their very strong index of twenty-three point eight percent. This significant one-year underperformance also caused them to underperform for the five-year period. The three-year period still reflects significant outperformance, and we're very pleased with the absolute average annual return of ten percent over the last five years. In summary, we continue to carefully monitor the performance of all these money managers on a quarterly basis with the assistance of the plan's investment consultant, CAP Trust Advisors. With an emphasis on long-term performance of the managers versus their respective indexes and adherence to the management styles that we hired them for, we will continue to provide the trustees with recommendations for terminations and replacement as appropriate. On a separate note, the Investment Committee will be bringing you a recommendation in the coming months to hire our first private credit money manager. Per the analysis, it appears this new alternative asset category could enhance the diversification of the portfolio and thereby reduce the volatility of our returns from year to year. I'll have more information for that topic when I bring that agenda item forward. With that, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Ravens?
There's a lot of numbers.
No? Thank you.
Good day.
Thank you. I'll move to item four point five on the agenda.
Appoint an individual to the Pension Investment Committee with a term to expire April eighteen, two thousand twenty-six, trustees. The committee is responsible, as Mr. Ravens just mentioned, of the oversight of the pension plan investments and provides recommendations to the trustees regarding asset allocation, even on the hiring and firing of money managers. So in your agenda pack, you have applications for two individuals, John Connolly, who is a retired financial consulting management, and Carrie Green, who is a financial planner.
Vice Mayor Albretton?
I'm going to suggest John Connolly for this position. I've known him, and he's a...I think he would be an asset to us in this position.
I agree.
Any other discussion?
Good with that.
Motion by Vice Mayor Albretton to appoint Mr. Connolly to the Pension Investment Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
One second. Can we have a...
Oh, excuse me.
Open it to the public, please.
Yeah. Are there any citizens to be heard on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Out of the number five on the agenda, old business items. Okay. With that, we will adjourn the meeting of the pension trustees. We will...
I think that's off.
Clock's off? Okay, we'll go ahead. Next time I'll call or order the April fifteen, two thousand twenty-four Clearwater City Council Work Session. I'd like to welcome everyone here this afternoon, including all the staff who are in attendance. Move to item two point one on the agenda.
Approve the local housing assistance plan for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Chuck Lane, Economic Development Housing Department. So as a recipient of state housing initiative partnership funding every year, we're required to submit a local housing assistance plan every three years. The L-HAP, as we call it, is our guiding document for our use of ship funds. The current L-HAP expires on June thirtieth, and the new one will begin on July one, which is the beginning of the state fiscal year. The proposed L-HAP has eight strategies. Two of them are new. Six of the strategies are continuing from the current L-HAP with some changes to each. All of the changes we're proposing are really based on two things. One, we're trying to have some consistency with programs administered by other local governments, but more importantly, we're trying to respond to market conditions. If market conditions change during the life of this plan, we have the ability to make changes to stay current with market needs. So to explain the changes to the existing strategies, we've increased the maximum loan to a developer for acquisition and construction for single-family homes from two hundred thousand dollars in the current plan to three hundred thousand dollars in the proposed plan. We're also increasing their developer fee from twelve percent to fifteen percent. We've increased homebuyer purchase assistance loans from forty-five thousand dollars to seventy-five thousand dollars. That equals the county's maximum loan under their program. We're also increasing the deferral period, a period for which they don't have to make payments, for households with incomes up to fifty percent of area median income and below, so very low-income households. The current L-HAP has that deferral period of five years with repayment of fifty percent of the loan over the following twenty years. The new L-HAP will have the loan one hundred percent deferred for the twenty-five-year term of the loan. For eligible buyers over fifty percent of area median income and up to one hundred twenty percent of area median income, we'll continue to provide a five-year deferral period with fifty percent repayment over the remaining term. Okay? Our owner-occupied rehabilitation loan program, that's a staple in our programs, it will continue to provide up to sixty thousand dollars for eligible improvements. In addition, the new L-HAP provides up to fifteen thousand dollars in additional grant funding for ADA improvements for qualifying households with special needs. Other changes under the program including increasing the income limit for the one hundred percent deferral period. We're proposing all borrowers up to eighty percent of AMI have a deferred loan. And for homeowners with incomes between eighty percent AMI and one twenty percent AMI, we're proposing to continue to provide a one hundred and twenty-day deferral period, that would be the construction process, and fifty percent of the loan will be repaid over the remaining term of the loan. Okay? For multifamily housing, the maximum loan amount per unit for acquisition or new construction increases from a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit to two hundred thousand dollars per unit. For rehab, rehabilitation of multifamily units, the maximum increases from fifty thousand dollars to one hundred thousand dollars per unit. And we're not required to go to these maximums. Just want to make sure you're aware of that. And rather than a minimum thirty-year term, we're proposing a little flexibility there, twenty- to thirty-year terms, depending on the financial outlook of the property, of the project. The last existing strategy that we're continuing is disaster assistance. We don't fund this strategy if there is a disaster that affects housing. The Florida Housing Finance Corporation will very likely distribute funding to help households that have been damaged. Under this strategy, we will fund grants for home repairs up to twenty thousand dollars. This is an increase from the current limit of ten thousand dollars. Eligibility remains at incomes up to eighty percent of area median income for this strategy. So the two new strategies, one of them is demolition, relocation, and construction. So in our rehab program, we, you know, oftentimes we find homes that are just too far gone to repair with the maximum benefit under our rehab program, so we're just unable to help. We're proposing to provide loans up to two hundred thousand dollars to tear down a home and disrepair and build a new home on the same lot. It's a strategy we had years ago in Clearwater. We haven't had it for some time. Loans will be deferred for households below eighty, below fifty percent of area median income, and for others, we'll amortize fifty percent of the loan over twenty years. Additionally, we'll propose providing up to twenty-five thousand dollars in direct-pay grant funding for relocation assistance and storage fees. Lastly, we've added a rental assistance strategy. We won't administer this program internally. It's far too staff-intensive. But if we have a nonprofit that's willing and capable of doing so, we have the ability to partner. Eligible expenditures will be deposits, rent arrears, utilities, and up to six months of rental payments with a cumulative max benefit of ten thousand dollars. So once approved, we'll be able to submit this plan to the state. We'll submit it by the May second deadline. They've given us preliminary approval, so I don't anticipate any issues with our submission. So with that, I'll take questions, please.
Any questions for Mr. Lane? None, thank you.
Thank you. See you Thursday.
Consent?
It can't go on consent. It's an administrative public hearing item.
Okay. That's right. I need to look after the...
It's all right.
...parentheses, so appreciate that, ma'am. Okay, with that, we'll move to item three point one.
Authorize purchase orders to Control Southern Inc. of Swannie, Georgia; Dev Tech Sales of Avon Park Equipment Controls Company of Norcross, Georgia. Oh my gosh, okay. Gem Tech Incorporated of Malabar, Florida; Offer Natural Gas Meters and Regulators.
Good afternoon, council members. Catherine Haley, Clearwater Gas Systems Division Controller. Clearwater Gas System requests to authorize the purchase orders for the purchase of natural gas meters and regulators. All meters and regulators are used on the Clearwater Gas System for new customers, replacements, and changeouts within the system as necessary. As part of bid fifteen dash twenty-four, we are requesting to award to Control Southern, Dev Tech Sales, Equipment Controls, Gem Tech, and Merco in an not-to-exceed amount of one point three million. With that, we also are requesting that, to ensure the continuity of supply, flexibility to order from secondary source. I can answer any questions at this time.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none, consent?
Yes.
Unanimous. Item four point one.
Approve the Second Amendment between the City of Clearwater and International City Management Association Retirement Corporation, doing business as Mission Square Retirement.
Good afternoon, everyone. Jill Paul, HR Manager. As previously stated, I'm here to request the approval of the Second Amendment between the City of Clearwater and the International City Management Association Retirement Corporation, ICMA RC, doing business as Mission Square Retirement, to provide administrative services as the administrator of the city's 401A Purchase Pension Plan and the voluntary 457 Deferred Compensation Plan for the term June first, two thousand twenty-four, through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-nine. Mission Square currently administers the city's 401A Plan and the voluntary 457 Deferred Compensation Program. The 401A Money Purchase Plan is funded by city contributions on behalf of participants and is provided to those hired into exempt management positions that do not qualify for enrollment in the defined benefit pension plan. The voluntary 457 Deferred Compensation Plan is funded by plan participants. Mission Square has approached the city with a proposed fee reduction for plan participants from the current point zero four nine percent to point zero three nine percent, in exchange for a new five-year agreement, equating to a twenty point four percent decrease in the fee. The city retains the right to terminate the agreement at any time with ninety days' written notice. Staff is very pleased with the level of administrative services and employee support provided by Mission Square and recommends the approval of the five-year agreement to take advantage of significant fee reductions for employees and plan participants. Seeking a new vendor at this time would cause a significant disruption to employees, as employees would need to transition and set up new accounts, which recently occurred in two thousand nineteen. That transition process took approximately four to six months. For these reasons, the purchase is impractical to bid. At the end of the five-year renewal, staff does intend to issue a new RFP. Questions?
Any questions from the council? Hearing none, do we have consent?
Yes.
Unanimous? Thank you. Move to item five point one.
Award purchase orders to Quality Sod and Landscaped LLC, Sunbelt Sod and Grading Company, and Tom Sod Service for citywide sod needs.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. I'm Art Cater, Parks and Recreation Director. The item before you today is for the purchase and installation services for the sod material, which is used throughout the city by several different departments. Parks and Recreation obviously is the largest purchaser of the sod, because we use them for parks, ballfields, mediums, and also new projects. We are recommending three different vendors to supply the various varieties of sod needed throughout the year. In that way, we have the availability of sod, to be quite honest with you, and flexibility when we need it. Obviously, these sod fields, they'll get flooded out, and then you don't have any sod, and you got...so you got to have someone else to go to. So that's basically it. I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Cater? No? Hearing none, consent?
Yep.
Unanimous? Item five point two.
Authorize a guaranteed maximum price proposal to Keystone Excavators for pavement milling and resurfacing at six Parks and Recreation facilities.
Yes, Art Cater, Parks and Recreation Director. This item is really for the resurfacing repair of six of our parks, parking lots, as well as resurfacing a trail and installation of some sidewalk that we have at Sewell Road Park. We have several maintenance capital improvement projects within Parks and Recreation, and this is just one of those CIP projects that we annually look at. We go over playgrounds as one of them, fencing is another one. So this is just for, basically, the parking lots, asphalt, and sidewalks. The contract will provide resurfacing and repair work at Country Hollow Park, Forest Run Park, Glen Oaks Park, Philip Jones Park, Sewell Road Park, and Woodgate Park. Contracts for a hundred and eighty days, but we're hopeful that it'll be done sooner than that, depending upon the weather. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Cater? Hearing none, do we have consent?
Yes.
Unanimous? Item five point three.
Authorize a guaranteed maximum price proposal to Certus Builders for professional construction services to include the final design and subsequent construction of the new structural and surface improvements at two zero one Glenwood.
Yes, Art Cater, Parks and Recreation Director. This item is for the expansion of a metal canopy at the Crest Lake Park and other items related to that movement and improvements of the, basically, the maintenance yard that we have out there, expansion of fencing, and also installation of some concrete. A few years ago, at Crest Lake Park, as you all know, we underwent a major renovation or completion of a redesign of the park, the addition of several new components. Basically, it was a playground, splash pad, volleyball courts, walking trails, and bridges, a new arboretum, restrooms, parking, and landscaping. In the active area of the park, where we have the restroom and where we have the splash pad, we also put in there a maintenance yard for all of our staff that works out of that. Unfortunately, at the time, we put some covering over all of the pool equipment or the equipment for the splash pad, but we did not put the equipment or this metal building, it's called a skillion, I knew that. Somebody calls it a portisay, but that's not that, because you got to drive up to that. But it's a skillion building. So in hindsight, we really should have put this metal structure over the area where we have, keep all of our maintenance vehicles. Right now, they're out in the weather, to be quite honest with you. We cover them up, but this will allow to protect that area. Also know that we've expanded the maintenance teams, as you know, working at Coachman Park. They actually maintain Coachman Park all the way through Cleveland Street and that little section of Gulf to Bay, all the way up to Crest Lake Park. So the team has expanded. We don't have any maintenance yards down here in the park, so we're using Crest Lake Park for that purpose as well. So I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Cater? Hearing none, do we have consent?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cater. Move to item six point one.
Approve the annexation of future land use map designation residential low and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium density residential for fourteen eighty-five Grove Circle Court.
Thank you, Colorado Brotherhood Planning and Development. This voluntary annexation petition involves a zero point two-three-three acre property consisting of one parcel of land occupied by detached dwelling. The applicant is requesting annexation in order to receive sanitary sewer and solid waste service from the city. The applicant is aware that this required sewer impact and assessment fees must be paid in full prior to connection and of the additional... paid in full prior to connection and of the additional cost to extend the city sewer, and upon annexation, solid waste will be provided.
Move to item 6.2.
Approve the annexation of still future land use map designation residential low, RL, and initial zoning atlas designation of low, medium density residential for 3076 Grandview Avenue.
Thank you, Cobb, Brotherton Planning and Development. This voluntary annexation petition involves a 0.172 acre parcel of land occupied by detached dwelling. The applicant is requesting annexation in order to receive sanitary sewer and solid waste service from the city. The applicant has paid all required impact and assessment fees and is connected to the city sewer, and upon annexation, solid waste will be provided.
Any questions? Move to item 6.3.
Approve the annexation of still future land use map designation of residential low and initial zoning atlas designation of low, medium density residential for 1410 Lime Street.
Good afternoon, Dylan Prince, Plan and Development. This voluntary annexation petition involves a 0.155 acre parcel located on the north side of Lime Street, approximately 500 feet east of South Hillcrest Avenue, and the parcel's occupied by detached dwelling. And the applicant is requesting annexation in order to receive sanitary sewer and solid waste service from the city. The Development Review Committee is proposing that the 0.10 acres of a budding Lime Street right-of-way, not currently within the city limits, also be annexed. The applicant has paid the city sewer impact and assessment fees and is aware of the additional cost to extend city sewer service to this property. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Move to item 7.1 on the agenda.
Approve an increase on the purchase order to QTM Inc. of Oldsmar for pit repairs to the solid waste transfer station.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Councilmembers, curbing said Amy Solid Waste. Before I started, could you allow me a quick minute to introduce Mr. Kobe Washington, Mr. Washington Brown, Solid Waste's Assistant Director, who's coming to us from the City of Fort Pierce, second week of Solid Waste. So, just wanted an opportunity to present Mr. Kobe Washington to the City of Clearwater.
Welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember, Mayor, Councilmember, item number 2402, approve increase for purchase order to QTM, Osmo, Florida, for a pit repair for the solid waste transfer station for $137,431, for a combined amount of $227,431. On August 23, 2022, procurement issued invitation to bid ITV 5222 Welding Metal Fabrication and Related Services for Public Utilities. Five responsible bidders were received. QTM was the most responsible bidder and was awarded the bid. A purchase order was issued on October 17, 2022, in the annual not-to-exceed of $50,000 for one year, with two one-year renewal options. In the first renewal term, the city manager approved an increase of $45,000 for additional work needed by Public Utilities. QTM has agreed to extend the pricing to solid waste, with the purchase by solid waste. The total amount allocated for the, for year two for the contract will be $227,431. So, the solid waste transfer station, located at 1,005 Old Coachman Road, has two pits used to transfer refuse to Pinellas County's, Pinellas County Waste Energy Facility. Pit two has 12 existing steel panels weighing approximately 650 pounds, which is pulling off the concrete wall, creating a dangerous situation, which requires closing the pit until repairs are done. Pit one also has some, two existing panels, which is being needed to, which is also pulling off the wall. So, currently, we are, we are functioning only on one pit. This project will, this project will repair both pits to light conditions and provide the city staff with a functioning facility to perform their assigned task safely. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor.
Okay, well, this, this facility, it wasn't really, it wasn't built too long ago, I mean, is this, and I know last council meeting, didn't we approve some concrete work for...
So, the concrete work that was approved for was the transfer station at the Hercules Facility, recycling facility.
Oh, the Hercules.
Hercules Facility. This one is at the transfer station on northeast Coachman Road. So, you're correct. So, that facility was built about a little bit over four years ago. And the pit, if you could envision it, when the truck, the tractor trailers pulls in to be loaded, the tipping floor, the product is pushed down the tipping floor. It's a very narrow channel that the truck pulls in, so as it pulls in, the truck kind of beat back and forth on the sides of that wall, and it's kind of damaged the, the panels.
Oh, okay, I see. So, it's a panel, vertical panel?
It's a panel between, so you have the truck goes in that, that narrow channel.
Yes.
And then there's panels on both sides.
Okay. All right, with this, with this work, we shouldn't have that problem?
We were hoping we're not. We, we are, we reached out to QTM, which is a welding specialist in that field, and we're hoping that they could repair that, and we won't have that issue anymore. We reached out to the, to the contractor and that put that project together, and we only received one year of warranty on the, on the, on the building, so we were not able to, to get any warranty work done on that facility.
Okay.
Councilmember, I'd like to point out, there, there, it's kind of a wear and tear situation that's gonna be pretty regularly reoccurring, so I wouldn't want to give any false impression that this is, I mean, some of us may not be here again, but I suspect five, seven years again, this will be something I think will require regular attention, just by the nature of the, the work that gets done, the amount of abuse the walls take from just the service.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, too. Is there any other type of work that we could do to get it one and done, or at least a further out type of a weld or a new wall or something that you could have, instead of doing what we already have, that we know breaks in five to seven years?
So, that's part of why we reached out to QTM.
Yeah.
To try to put that product back in, in the condition that we're not in this position any further.
Okay.
Additionally, that's why we went to pit two, because the product started to peel off the wall, instead of waiting until we get to this condition, then we, we addressed it currently, so.
Okay.
To be honest with you, that, that should have been done months ago.
Gotcha.
Should, should have been addressed months ago.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do we have consent?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you. Move to item 8.1.
Appoint two individuals to the Environmental Advisory Board to fill the remainder of two unexpired terms, one through December 31, 2025, and one through October 31, 2025. Councilmembers, we had two individuals resign from the board. Ms. Lynch and Mr. Thomas had resigned recently, and in the agenda pack, you have seven applicants to consider. Gladys Andrews, a retired principal, Tony Braden, Bradenberg Insurance Agent, Jason Drizdy, an environmental scientist, Irina Ford, an investment products support individual, Sonia Jokala, a lease analyst, Patricia Kirby, a vision coach, and Michael Rubino, an air quality expert.
Any discussion among the council and the folks who have applied? Councilmember, take shade.
Well, first of all, I'm really pleased that there's so many applicants. That was so refreshing. Usually, we don't, so thank you to all who have expressed interest. Lot of qualified applicants. There's two that stick out in my mind, simply because of their educational background or professional, and that would be Jason Drizd and Michael Rubino. Both have environmental professional experience, quite extensive. Jason Drizd has a bachelor's degree in environmental science, previous park ranger. And then the other one is Michael Rubino, who's an environmental expert in air quality. And I actually looked him up, and he's really sought after for his expertise in interviews, and he's an expert in microbial science. So, those two, to me, stand out.
Any other comments? Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I kind of agree with that. I'll, I'll make a, a motion for Mike Rubino.
No motion today, but if there's consensus on one individual, we can do that.
Okay.
Otherwise, we can wait till Thursday.
All right.
Is there two openings or one?
There's two, that's right. So, I, the only thing I would really need from, from you is if there is consensus on two individuals, what terms you would like those individuals to, to serve in.
Oh, I see.
So, the first one is through December 31, 2025.
Okay, so you want me to put fourth?
If you want, if there's consensus for the two individuals, then, and I can, I can adjust the agenda item for Thursday for consent. If there's consensus.
I'm in support of those two.
I agree, we did have a lot of applicants, so thank you, if you're in the room, for applying. Item two on my little list here had Jason listed because of his experience, and Michael or Mr. Rubino as well, so I definitely agree with that assessment.
I concur.
Yeah, I feel the same in reading the qualifications, it was quite impressive for the, for this list, and nice, nice to see, and I don't have an issue with either of those two gentlemen. I did have an interest in throwing Gladys Andrews named in solely because, as we went through zip codes, there is no representation down on the beach or Sand Key, and I think having, we do have a lot of professional experience in the environmental side of things, and that seems to be covered pretty well, but having that citizen side that lives on the beach would be the only reason I would throw that third name out there, but I am supportive of those two.
So, we have consensus on the two, and that, that's all you need from us today?
It doesn't matter who serves what.
Can we leave it up to them?
Well, no, I, I need to, I need to adjust the agenda item, so I can go by alphabetical and have them, I can have Mr. Drizd serve through December 31, 2025, and Mr. Rubino through October 31, 2025. Talk, talk a few months.
Sounds good.
May I place it on consent?
You agree?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, move to item 8.2.
Appoint an individual to the Community Development Board to fill the remainder of an unexpired term through February 28, 2026. Councilmembers, as you are aware, we had an opening, a vacancy occur on the CDB with the election of Mayor Rector. In your agenda pack, you have applications from two individuals who meet the desired qualifications, and that is Louise Serna, Louis Serna, Planning Consultants, and Charles Uzlander, Construction Project Manager. And then we also received applications from the following individuals, Mr. Jonson, a retired project manager, an elected representative, Jessica Martin, real estate investor, and Michael Mestresario, promotion and marketing sales VP.
Any discussion? Thoughts, ideas?
I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll jump in. I think, again, looking at the list, it's, it's nice to see, and seeing what we have existing, we do have a lot of really qualified professionals on there. I think through the campaign process, we were hearing a lot from our citizens about truly wanting balance in here and balancing the importance of our economic development side with some of the neighborhood issues that have gone on. I, I think that, you know, obviously, two names on here that are on a list is not meeting the desired qualifications, but are definitely, would bring knowledge and balance, first is Mike Mestresario. Has a definite passion for economic development in our community, and not just the downtown area, but also has a passion for our neighborhoods. And the other one, obviously, is Bill, Bill Jonson, feed those two, but I, I say, Mestresario really brings balance as, as well as that passion to that development side.
He also represents a zip code that is not at all included. I mean, we have three right now at 33759, but 33756 is not, there's no representation, so that would be a great addition as well, so I'm in support of Mr. Mestresario.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like Mike for the position, too.
I just want to say, you know, I had a chance to serve for two years on that board, and I do think, I mean, there are a number of candidates on here who would be good, but Mike, Mike Mestresario brings, I think, you know, he's had years of business experience, so he knows restaurants and all that, and some of them, some of the issues that come from the business side of it, but, but Mike also has the, the, he, he just was involved in a campaign where he canvassed, and he talked to all the neighborhoods throughout Clearwater, too, and I think he's, is on top of all the issues that, that are concerning to neighborhoods and residents as well, so, so I would, I would support Mike for that disposition. So, I guess all five of us, agreement?
May I place it on consent?
Okay. Move to item 8.3.
Appoint council members to regional and miscellaneous boards. Councilmembers, in your agenda pack, I have all the regional boards. Some of them have been updated. Those that have a term listed is because it actually has a term, otherwise, it is for the one year that you agree to today, or on Thursday. So, with that, I've, I've also highlighted those air, those boards at need of an appointment, so there's a vacancy. The first one is the Audit Committee. That was being held by Mayor Onks, but it's not necessarily one that requires the mayor to serve on.
Has the mayor traditionally served on that one, though? No?
It's whoever wants to serve on it.
Well, the mayor has other things that he's serving on that some of the other mayors recently have not, so. Anyone here that's interested in doing that? Mr. Rubino?
No, I'm just asking, just for clarification. Are we going through these individually single on every opening? Is that how we plan to approach this?
If it's easier, I can just go over highlight today, and we can discuss it on Thursday, if that's easier for the council.
Because I can, I mean, for the sake of efficiency and moving forward, I, I can agree for consistency to fill every vacancy that seat three councilperson sat on.
Okay.
And if, if our colleagues would, you know, agree with that, I don't have a problem filling those. I know that would leave, obviously, a handful of others on the other side for seat two, and we can check with the gentleman's calendar regarding that, but...
Can you go over what those are? Because I think some of them are mine.
I won't steal your boards, I promise.
There's a lot of ours.
I can't. I think, I just sat on the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and usually, hand-in-hand with that is the Homeless Leadership Alliance. Second would be Sunkos League of Cities. Third would be the Tampa Bay Estuary Policy Board. I know Worknet Pinellas Board is not mandatory, but I would like to, to keep a representative on that, and I would, I don't mind being that. And then, obviously, I sat the Affordable Housing Committee.
Perfect, okay.
I also went through this list, and would be able to fill the majority of Mr. Bunker's positions, with some scheduling conflicts coming up with Tampa Bay Estuary Board. I do work that next meeting, but I do see there's alternates here as well, and he was an alternate on that board. And then the Pension Advisory Committee, let's see, I can start at the beginning. The Courtney Campbell Scenic Highway, I can take that. School Transport Safety Committee, the alternate for the Tampa Bay Estuary, alternate for Tampa Bay Regional, and the Pension Advisory Committee.
What about Big C? He was the alternate on Big C.
So, the Big C's?
I was told that it's mostly mayors, right?
Yes, I was the only one that was.
I'll do Big C.
You'll do Big C? Okay.
Councilmember Dick Shade has said that her experience, that's all, all the others are mayors.
Mostly mayors, yes. So, who, Vice Mayor, do you want to do the alternate for Big C, then?
I, I could do the alternate, but I just wanted to, the reason I had my hand up was I didn't see Ford Pinellas on here, and I know that it's on the governor's desk now to give Clearwater another representative on Ford Pinellas.
Page two.
It's on there.
Ford Pinellas.
Until they're, until they notify us of the additional appointment, it, it's not listed yet.
Yeah, there's gonna be, yeah, there's gonna be two, and, and that's a monthly...
And when that, when they notify me officially, because with that one, actually, the council has to make the recommendation to the county, and then the county accepts the...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure...
But it's on there.
I just want to make sure everybody knew that.
Did you have anything you want to add?
I'm all set with my six.
I mean, I'm, yeah. Obviously want to be a team player, but trying to work with schedules. You guys know how that works, so.
Mr. Mayor, just so I understand it, I'm not stepping on your toes. Did you want the Tampa Bay Estuary Policy Board? Or do you want to just fill it as an alternate?
No, I can take it if you want to be an alternate for it. I won't be able to make the next meeting though.
Well, I'll go, I'll go as your alternate.
My guy. Let's go.
What was that? I'm sorry.
That was Tampa Bay Estuary.
It's going to say Tampa Bay Estuary Policy Board and Menino as alternate.
Okay.
Yeah. And these are all the other things I want in each one of them. That's, that's the thing about that.
Anything you want to add?
No.
Okay. Take helpful? Good? Okay. Yeah, that will move to item nine point one.
Mayor, this is my item nine point one. There's not really a lot to say beyond what's stated in the agenda item itself. Part of being a city attorney means that we have to deal with lawsuits. And so, you know, for the most part, most of our lawsuits are relatively predictable in the sense that, like any city, we're going to have slip and falls, we're going to have car accidents. You know, that's kind of par for the course. But then we get into unusual lawsuits. And this one is a little unusual with a plaintiff who has a long history of litigious actions. I don't want to say too much beyond what's in the agenda items since we are in a public meeting. But I will disclose to the council that this twenty-five thousand is just getting us started in the litigation. So I will have to budget for this next year because this litigation could go on for some time. That's my problem to deal with. I will budget for it appropriately, but I want the council to know that this is an unexpected lawsuit and we'll just deal with it as we have to.
Questions from Mr. Magalas. Do we have consent?
Yes.
Yep.
Unanimous? Move to item ten, city manager reports.
Nothing, sir.
Move to item eleven, city attorney reports.
Nothing at this one.
Move to item twelve point one. Councilmember Dick Shad.
Please pass this down. Down. So I'm giving you a copy of some information. So I'm on the opioid abatement funding advisory board. I was the alternate, but then I just inherited. And so I just wanted to give you a glimpse of some of the important findings that we had of a opiate task force data review. There's a lot of information, so I'm going to leave it up to you to read it. However, I do want to just kind of go over some takeaway points. So on the whole, according to the twenty twenty-two annual drug report, we are seeing trends going down for opiate overdoses. However, fentanyl is on the rise. The data is not always captured because of course, you know, there's some that are not reportable. It's, it's very hard. But most of them are, are reported from emergency departments in the hospitals in the, in the county. And then when looking at Florida and dividing it into counties and looking at the overdose annual numbers per one, one hundred thousand people. Unfortunately, Pinellas County is in the red, which means it's the highest incidence. But there are other counties that are in the green, which is the lowest. And we will, we are going to enter in conversations with them and work with them to see if we can replicate those, those results. We are looking into, again, digging deeper into the information and coming up with an action plan. So there's a little bit of good news. There's still a lot of work to be done. And as you can see, we have a lot of support. If you look to page eighteen, the, the number of partners that we have are very impressive and they're actually growing. So I, I have hope. And so our next step is to capture more detailed data, including other states for, to form recommendations. And then we're going to come up with an action plan and hopefully turn Pinellas from red to green. And I will keep you guys abreast of, of our progress. Okay?
Yeah. So let, just, just let me say on this, this issue, I had a chance to attend a Clearwater Rotary Meeting where the US Attorney spoke and spoke directly to this issue. And, and really the crisis we face here, not just in Pinellas County, but throughout Florida. So I really appreciate and I'm sure the other council members do too, your involvement in this issue and your participating because it's, it's a very critical issue to Clearwater. We have, we have, we have a significant problem with particularly fentanyl in this county. And, and that impacts Clearwater right away. So we greatly appreciate your involvement and your leadership on this.
Thank you. I, I'm impressed with some of the strategies that they're, that they're focusing on. They're not just focusing on overdosing and overdoses and decreasing it, but they're actually being really, I think, forward, forward thinking. They're like looking at programs that support pregnant and postpartum women, neonatal abstinence syndrome, warm handoff programs, and also treatment for the incarcerated population. So we can head off that. So I'm really impressed with how extensive they're, they're reaching out. So I'm hoping that the results will be seen soon.
Thank you. Any, any council members have questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly thank you, Lena, for jumping in and being involved in this. I think so many in our community, family, friends have been touched by this crisis. And it's not just in our backyard. This is nationwide. It gives me some reprieve in knowing that you're on top of this and you're on this board. And I know how passionate you are for your causes and you will put Clearwater in a good place to hopefully lower and drop some of these numbers. And that's a serious note. On a funny note, I greatly appreciate your presentation and your delivery of this package and the ribbons that you tied on it. So I know my colleagues feel the same. So thank you for that.
As the only woman on the board, I feel pressure to, to, you know, put some estrogen in, on, on this diet. So I think, I think those folders are pretty, are pretty, aren't they?
They are.
And you have the nicest signature on the PSTA board. Mine, not so much. Hers, hers is the best. Vice Mayor Albright?
So yeah, I just had a question, Lena, on this green area. Is it include Dade County or is Dade above that?
Hold on, let me look at my thing. You know, I'm not quite sure because I, I didn't check if, if, if that was.
It's Monroe or Dade.
Right. Like, I'm not quite sure. But I have a funny feeling that it's just specific to the county. The way it's divided is just county. But I'm not, like, one thing that really jumped at me, I mean, it's right next to Miami. It's right next, it's still port, it's still same access, it's the same. What are they doing specifically? I mean, they're literally surrounded by red. So that's going to be interesting to, to have those conversations with that county and see what they're doing so, so different that their results are so, so drastic and so positive.
Yeah. Want to look into that. Thank you.
The other chair's, the impact of opioid abuse to all of our city departments, all of our city employees, whether it's first responders, obviously have to deal with a lot of this directly. It impacts a lot of other city departments and city employees as well too, that they have to deal with folks who are struggling for different reasons. And, and there's a, there's a, there's a cost to the citizens of Clearwater in, in not directly addressing this issue. So appreciate your taking leadership on it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, with that, we'll move to item thirteen, new business items, not only agenda, but that could be brought up for discussion in a future meeting. Okay. That will move to item fourteen, closing comments by mayor. You know, there, we've had, we've had lots of news stories the first two weeks that three of us have been sitting up here, and me in particular. And, you know, some of them not all positive. But I've shared with media and I just want to share with you all here again today that, you know, I couldn't be more positive every time I talk with the media. And, and I never want something that's perceived as being a negative story to overshadow the great things we're working on and the great work our staff is doing throughout the community. And so every time I get asked about a controversial story, and I have been asked several times this first two weeks, I respond that I couldn't be more excited about the future of Clearwater going forward and our ability as a team to move forward. And, and I don't say that because I'm trying to spin it a different way. I say that because of some things that I saw just this weekend. And I know during the campaign on Neighborhoods Day and other council members shared with me that they had same experience. So many residents were complimentary of our city staff, our city employees, all different departments. The way that they had touched or they had done something positive in their neighborhood or community and, and great work and compliments throughout the city, every department. And so we don't ever want to forget that. And then this weekend, there were a number of activities and I've had to see several council members there at some of the, the activities that we had this weekend. We had a lot of them. But two that stood out, we had this incredible dog challenge down in Cochran Park. And I didn't know much about it until I got over there. I knew it had something to do with television. But it's going to be a nationally televised event on NBC, I think, June fourteenth of the broadcast date. So it, it was the real deal. They had a beautiful setup in Cochran Park with water in the background. And it was a spectacular setting for, for television. And certainly for the weather, it couldn't have been any better. So everything just kind of came together the right way. But, so I had only intended to be over there for maybe a half an hour. I, I stayed for four hours or so. I mean, I, I got, one of my best days as mayor, I got to spend, you know, four hours with dogs and put medals of the, of the winners, you know, around the dogs' necks. And I had a great time. But, but more than anything, I had a chance to talk with the, the television people. Camera people were there. And they, they, some of them were from Tampa Bay. They do network television events, camera people for all kinds of things. But some of them weren't. They were from all over the country. And they just went gushed over how great our venue was for their event. And one of the things they really complimented us on was the turf in Cochran Park. For, you know, it's, it's an elite, these, these folks were qualifying for the national competition, national championships. And they commented over and over again about how great that our turf was down in Cochran Park. And granted, we only put it in ten months ago, so it should be, you know, fairly nice. But we've had a lot of weather and we've had a lot of things, activities down there that could have destroyed it. And so that was a testament to our Parks and Recreation team that gets down there and then, we heard earlier about how they have folks assigned to several different parks to take care of it. We put millions of dollars in, of an investment of taxpayer dollars into that park. It's important to keep it nice. And I was so impressed at how they were impressed with how we had taken care of it. So I complimented several of the folks down there with the Parks and Rec Department on that because it was really great. And then, you know, it's, like I said, it's not all Parks and Rec, but you know, there's all things that all of our departments are doing great throughout the community. But the other one that stood out was last night at the final night of the Pier Sixty, the Sugar Sand Festival. They had a salsa night and orchestra, Infiniti, Infiniti was there. And that place was packed. It was, it was lively. It was, people stayed, you know, had a day at the beach and then stayed through the fireworks at nine o'clock. It was just a great and a very diverse community event. And, you know, our Parks and Rec working with them to make that event happen. And then have the creativity to bring, bring that kind of night to the final night was just impressive as well. And, and again, people around there, a lot of visitors. I met a lady who was brought to Clearwater on Kelly Clarkson Show. She won some contest. So she came here from New York City. Just because she won the contest on the show to be here, she just raved about her experience here in Clearwater. So, and that's, like I said in the beginning, that's, that's not the two weekend mayor Bruce Rector. That's all of us as a team, working to make this city better. And those are the two things I just want to point out, the many things, great that are happening in Clearwater. We want to make sure they keep happening in Clearwater. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting of the city council work session.